We're going to call to order the January 6, 2015 work-study session of the Planning, Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barrett.
Here.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Pasiak.
Here.
Chairperson Glenn Rowitch.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is discussion items. Item 3A, proposed text amendments for Section 4.21 Sign Regulations. The purpose of this discussion is to review Section 4.21 of Chino Valley's Unified Development Ordinance and Sign Codes from nearby communities, and to form a stakeholder group to review proposed amendments prior to consideration by the commission and council. Staff have reviewed the signed regulations of nearby towns and cities, searching for a more concise and clear means of describing the requirements of Chino Valley's sign code. This will be the first of a number of work-study sessions that will be held to provide the business community and the general public the opportunity to participate in revising Section 4.21 Sign Regulations. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. I have a PowerPoint that I want to run through. First, I wanted to thank the people in the audience for coming this evening and taking time out of their day. I think this is going to be helpful in laying a foundation, especially for those people who aren't familiar with signage and how sign ordinances work. So again, as the chairperson Rowitch said, this is the first of a number of work-study sessions that we're going to be holding as a part of this process, so we can all understand how signage is regulated, what works, what doesn't work, reorganizing the actual UDO in a format that's far more understandable and readable for non-professionals, and to review proposed changes before we take them to a formal public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Once we are done and satisfied with the work at this level, it will go through the public hearing process at P&amp;Z, and then it will go to town council for final approval. One of the questions I hear a lot is, if we do this, am I going to lose my signs? Is the town going to take my signs away? And in zoning, there is a legal class called illegal nonconformity, which means that at the time the ordinance was changed, the structure of the sign was in compliance, but the changes rendered it not in compliance. So any sign that is in compliance right now, and that may change either setbacks, or sizes, or type of sign, as a result of any changes we may eventually make, would be legally nonconforming. So you would be able to continue to use that sign until a point at which you replace more than 50 percent of it, it's destroyed by more than 50 percent. Then it's no longer a legal nonconformity. You would have to build anything new to the new code, to the new standard set forth in code. However, if you have a sign right now that's not in compliance or in conformance with the existing code, you don't have any protection later on. If it's not in compliance now, it won't be in compliance in the future, unless the changes bring it into compliance. A lot of people say, why do we have to regulate signs in the first place? Well, if you look at some of these examples of what we call visual clutter, you can see pretty easily how things can get out of control if they're not regulated. And it's a fine line that we walk in trying to regulate signage so that we don't end up with something like this, yet we still have things that makes it easy for customers to find businesses, and to find offices, to find doctors, and to figure out where they're going. If you look at this 440 Plaza sign for just a second, and look at all of the things on there, and imagine you're driving down the road at 45 miles an hour, was there a sign on that previous, on that 440 Plaza sign, was there anything indicating the presence of a temporary work office, like an employment company? Did you see anything? There was.
Really?
Yeah. Right there, labor-ready.
Wow.
So this is, you can see why it is that we want to keep an eye on what's going on. It's not just because this is not what most people would consider attractive, it's also traffic hazards. You have people slowing way down in traffic, trying to read the sign when everybody else is going around them at 45 miles an hour or faster, and it's an accident waiting to happen. This is one of my favorites. I like to call this one Signs and Lines. Between the signs and the power lines, you really don't see a whole lot of anything. This one is too much of a good thing. Here you have some very attractive projecting wall signs, but you can't see them in the clutter. So in the UDO, we, right now, we define a sign as any identification, description, illustration, symbol, or device which is affixed directly or indirectly upon a building, vehicle, structure, or land, and which identifies or directs attention to a product, place, activity, person, institution, or business. And it's important that we define it, because you will be surprised, well, maybe not, and amazed at the things that people try to tell me are not a sign. So what kind of signs on there? We have several different categories, and this is why it's so complicated in writing a sign ordinance, is that there are so many different kinds of signs. If it's not something that you deal with on a daily basis, I don't think people really realize what's out there in terms of what signs are available, and how do you write overlapping regulations. So these are all different examples of what we call a freestanding sign. These are all different samples of what we would refer to as a wall sign. They're all mounted on a wall in one way or another. These are all different versions of portable or temporary signs. Now, you can see, we already have our banner pole things there that are back as both a portable sign and a freestanding sign. These are all vehicle-mounted signs. This is one of my favorites. But again, can you park those and use them as permanent signage? Do they count? Do we factor them into the amount of signage that's allowed? These are all electronic message boards. These and the animated message boards are all becoming a lot more popular. They're pricey, but you can get a lot more information rolling through on them. These are all what we call nonplanar or figural signs. You don't see these as much, because they're really expensive to do. Again, now you have banners and flags, you have what we call pole signs, if it's mounted on a pole, Pizza Hut, but even the mead sign is a pole sign, it's mounted on a single pole. These are all monument signs at the top. These are onsite directional signs versus onsite directory signs, which are two distinct kinds of signs, where the directional signs say, "Main entrance, subway, order over here", versus administration building, "Here's the dean's office, this is the academic advising." Those are all onsite directory signs. We have illuminated signs. We have projected and awning signs, signs that project out from the wall, even though they're a wall-mounted sign, they do project out. How far do we let them project out? How high do they have to be off of a walkable surface, so people can't hit their heads on them? Animated signs. This is the animated electronic sign that I've mentioned before. These are, they're becoming more and more popular. We have, well, we have some electronic message boards here, but we haven't really reached this point yet. This is an animated sign. When you turn that thing on, the legs move. These are called movable type signs, because they're what you're used to before all of these electronic boards, where you have the suction cup and the letters, and you take them off and you put them on. Real estate signs, we're all familiar with those. Government signs, we post building permits, we have the Area 51 warning. We have multi-sided signs, where it's either a, an angle, a 45-degree angle, or an actual triangle, so there's advertising on more than one side. And there's a few more. We have, these are also becoming irritating. We call them bandit signs. People will come through town and just put them up. You see them for piano lessons and headstones, and we buy houses, and all those sorts of things. You have outdoor bulletin boards, like the school sign here, the healthcare pharmacy sign is on a mansard roof, that's different than the roof sign mounted down here, which is actually on top of the roof. And then you have, you know, district identification signs. So these are all the different kinds of signs that we have to try to regulate. And like I said, the electronic message boards and these, there's always new ones popping up. So when we, when we look at actual language for this ordinance, we need to think about not only what do we have now for signage, but what, how much more popular could these possibly become? Will they be smaller? Right now, they're mostly billboard size. Are they going to shrink down to a size where everybody's going to want one? We could have a picture of Cory in a truck driving down the road, out in front of his trucking company, if he wanted to do that. Is that something we want to allow on a regular basis, or is it something we want to limit to certain areas? So when we talk about regulating signage, there are a couple of ways that we regulate it. There's, and we're not going to get into this in great detail tonight, because it gets really painfully detailed. We have commercial speech, and we have non-commercial speech. Commercial speech are things like car wash, buy more Ovaltine, best tacos in the universe, warrant, hay, and more. Those are commercial signs. Non-commercial speech is Griffin May Day for president, it's Girl Scout cookie time, Chino Valley Cougar lives here, those kinds of signs that you see around that really are not directing someone to a business, or they, and they are not advertising a service, but rather stating, they're more opinion-oriented, viewpoint-oriented, rather than commercially-oriented. So that's why we differentiate. And that gets a little sticky when we get into political signage. Again, like I mentioned earlier on, we want to spend some time talking about aesthetics, and not, again, not whether it's pretty, but is it too cluttered? Can you see it at 45 miles an hour? Is it, is it going to be adequate to identify what's going on in the building or on that particular parcel of land? Is the size proportionate to the property? You know, you could have the 440 Plaza sign, you know, outside of Gary's, but that's kind of a bit much, unless he wanted to list all of his hay prices all out on the road, but that's a little bit more than he would probably need. So we need to look at proportionality to the property size, to the use. Not all sizes, not all businesses need the same size, or as dramatic signage as others would. Off-premises and on-premise signs. We've made some allowances for some temporary off-premise signs. Do we want to continue to do that? Do we want to make sure that all signs involving commercial speech are onsite? And we need to be able to talk about manner and placement, the type of sign, where pole signs are, where we allow non-commercial speech signs, where the political signs go, and the type that they are. Again, is it all pole signs everywhere, monument signs? What is it that we're looking to try to create in terms of visual impact and clarity? One of the other things we need to consider is the general plan that was recently ratified in the last election. The general plan talks about community cores, and it's worth considering, I think we need to focus on those cores when we're talking about some of this signage ordinance language, to make sure that we're doing things that we can, that will help define these cores, so that it's not just use. So you don't, you can come into the, oh, the proposed medical corps just south of Two North, at One North, and there's, the signage might be a little bit different, so that you know, oh, wait, here we are, this is different than the entertainment group further south, down by the hotel. So in talking about the general plan and the community core concept, and again, these boundaries are not written in stone, they're estimated areas of how big they will be. You know, this is, this is our educated planner guess of where this growth is going to start, and what kind of things are going to start developing there. So you see the darker blue boxes, the Recreation Employment Gateway Corps, the Hospitality and Entertainment Corps, and the Major Community and Downtown Corps, those are ones that we expect to see some development in the next 10 years. It may be eight or beyond, it may be in five years, but those are the ones we see developing first. And then the ones in the gray background, the Regional Gateway, the Medical Hub, the North Mixed Deuce Hub, which is pointing in the wrong direction, it's right up there at Four North, those are the ones that we see as a longer-range plan for development and growth. So the next steps that I'd like the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider are establishing a work group or a committee that would be willing to go through and do some of the heavy lifting on reviewing language, and talking about what it is the business community wants. I'd like to bring this back at the next work-study on February 3. We'll have one item for a regular meeting, and then we will be doing a work-study afterward adjourned to a work-study. And then if anybody wants to bring in signs that you like, email them to me. Signs that you like, signs that you don't like. What is it that you want to see? We also need to keep in mind, when we're going through all of this, the cost to the business community. You know, when we do things, we want it to look attractive, we want it to identify businesses, but, you know, what is going to look good for one business may not for the other. And we don't want to make, the point here is to make this easier to understand, easier to enforce, easier for people to comply with. So we don't want to start loading it up with a whole lot of design requirements. So it's a delicate balance. This is going to be about a six-month process that we're looking at for this, but it's something that we need to start thinking about and talking about in terms of what it is we want to do. I can tell you, one of the first things I tasked Elise with was to review sign permits. And it took us half an hour, looking through the existing sign code, to try to figure out where we could find this sign in the UDO, because it's so confusing the way that it's written. That's not fair to staff, it surely is not fair to the general public. How on earth can they possibly read through that and figure out what it is that we're looking for, or what size sign they could have? It doesn't need to be that complicated. In your packet, we included just the wall signage section from the town of Prescott Valley, from Chino Valley, and the Cottonwood Regulations for their signage, just so that you can see an example of different approaches of how this is done. Personally and professionally, I think that the Prescott Valley sign regulations, the way it's laid out in a table, is much cleaner, much easier to read, it's much easier to find the information. You can find the district, you can find, it's all set out according to different types of signs, pole signs, wall signs, freestanding signs, so that it's much easier for people to find the information. This is the end product. Now, I'm not talking about the actual content of the regulation, I'm just talking about this form. I think this form is highly useful in making things easier and clearer for the public to understand. In terms of the, you can see in reading what we have in the UDO versus the simple chart, it's much easier just to look down this and figure out what there is. Cottonwood has sign regulations included, we've included their sign regulations in here for all of their zoning district, for all of their commercial signage. So it's, it's more concise, and it's a lot less verbiage than Chino Valley's, but it still is not this easy, simple table. It's much easier to find the information, especially when you're talking about different types and different zoning districts. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have, and while it's not ordinary to open up the work-study session to public comment, if the chair so wishes, it might be helpful to hear from the folks that have shown up this evening.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Prescott Valley sign regulations are for wall-mounted signs, and then when I read the Chino Valley sign regulations, excuse me, on the second page, where it says 4.21.8 A.1., and it says, "A wall sign or monument sign may be permitted at the entryway of a subdivision." A monument sign, and I know that this is intended that it is on the property, but it could literally be in the middle of the entrance. I have seen.
Oh, sure.
And that is problematic, because it's then an obstruction.
Right.
For driving.
Right. This is, this is a traffic issue, right?
And I've actually seen it where they've put an island parcel in the right-of-way, so that it was not in the right-of-way, but the parcel.
The HOA owns it, yes.
Yeah, and after the developer leaves, the HOA also has the problem with the obstruction and the site and everything else that goes with travel. And I just make that as a comment, that when we do look at that, we might want to address the fact that we're not going to have it in the roadway, or a parcel in the roadway, so monument can be in the middle of the road.
You're right, and those are the kinds of issues that we need to address. That's why this, this portion of the UDO is long overdue for an overhaul. It's been, it's been changed and changed here and there, and here and there, and it just, it does not function.
And you're right. Writing a sign ordinance is extremely difficult.
I have a question about this graph. It doesn't seem to have enough detail on it to cover some of the things that you guys are talking about. Some of the wordage is actually pretty specific. Cottonwood, item 2, says flashing signs. Signs shall not be animated or have intermittent illumination. This doesn't cover any of that, so is this one?
This is just one little section.
It's just a part of it.
Right.
It's not a total sign.
Right. This is.
Your idea is just the layout of it.
Right. This is, this is the layout.
Okay, that makes sense. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. So like, this one is from wall-mounted sign standards. On page 140, there's a section that says flashing signs. Yeah. So it goes, it does go on to talk about all the different, and then we talk about all the freestanding signs.
Oh, yeah. Well, I can see this layout's actually quite a bit easier to read. It's just a concern would be, does it cover things well enough?
Yeah. And we can make this go on for as many pages as we need.
I'm sure you could.
[laughing].
It's like reading a building code book.
Right.
Our guidelines are basically, need to be based on what the general plan, off of the general plan.
There are a couple of things that we need to take into consideration. The first one is traffic safety, the second one is aesthetics, and then the third one is general plan. So when we go back, whoa, whoa, here and look, it would probably be a good idea to focus if, on signage here, here, and here first. And frankly, down at the gate, down here, we already have the horse statues, the lovely sign coming into Chino Valley. But we do need to develop some, we need to consider what's on 89. We don't want to get into this, where is my lines and signs? You can see this starting already. If you come down 89, in certain sections, you can see this, not the billboards so much, but the, everybody's got a pole sign at the same height, you can't see any of them, and then you've got all of the telephone lines and everything else, and it just gets so cluttered, no one can see anything. So that's one of the things, those are the things we need to focus on. But in terms of the general plan, we need to look at this in terms of zoning and general plan, land use classifications. We do need to take those into consideration.
The other, where do billboards fit in this? Or is that an ADOT?
Well, billboards depend upon a lot of things. Right now, we don't have any billboards in town. Well, I take that back, we do, we have two on the South Side. We, I don't think we're going to do a whole lot in regulating those existing billboards.
Understandable.
Would we allow more? Probably not. There's a pretty healthy case law that they're, they can be considered traffic hazards, and that they're visual clutter, that they're not attractive. And those are some of the things that we can regulate.
Any other questions?
Not at this point. The, the rest of the Prescott Valley regulations?
Uh huh.
There's got to be more to it than this.
Oh, yeah. There's pages more.
Okay.
I just wanted, I didn't want to bore you with 12 pages of signage tables.
Okay. So it's probably similar to Chino Valley's. Chino Valley's has 21 pages.
Yeah, I don't, there, I don't think it's quite that large, but it's more than, this, the whole idea for this is just the concept of the table versus lines of text, which is easier to understand.
Okay. And it is 21 pages in the Chino Valley?
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it is, yes. It sounds about right.
All right. So this is not a public hearing, but it's okay to have a public speak?
Sure.
Okay, great. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? All right. Oh, yes?
I'm one of those annoying piano teachers. I've been here 30 years, and in 2013, I had permission from, I don't know who it was, but the zoning and COVID guy here in Chino, to put my signs out, like yard sale signs. So I faithfully put them out on Thursday night, and I faithfully picked them up Sunday night. And I got to tell you, that was the best advertising ever. And they're, they're small, they're easy to read, and I always put them in places that were not a traffic hazard. And then I even had some professionally made, and then in 2014, I was told I couldn't put them out anymore. But in all the advertising that I've ever done, like I said, in 30 years, those signs have been the best ever. And I've, I've put ads in the paper, I've talked to the music teachers at the schools, Craigslist, all I got was scammers, and seriously, I mean, it was, it was bad. But the signs on the highway were, like I said, the best ever. But the problem is, is I don't need the signs out Friday to Sunday, I need them out on Monday to Thursday, when the moms are taking their kids to school, so they, so they know that there's a piano and guitar teacher in town. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Best advertising ever.
Go ahead.
I think there's going to be plenty of time to print, but I really don't have any of that. I'm just curious about the stakeholder group, and putting together the committee, and who's going to be part of that, and what division is for that, so if there's a appropriate time, if there's a fit for that.
Yeah, I think we're going to get to that, I think we're going to get to that next. That's part of our agenda. Anybody else like to speak?
Bob Whiteman with the Chamber. I don't have anything to add right now, we just want to let you know, this is needed, this is long overdue, and we'd like to help and be a part of it, and help our business community.
So take that as a volunteer. You're going to volunteer to be on the?
Sure.
All right.
I do have a question. What is the compliance now? Is it these two pages?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, the compliance now is the 21 pages we were just talking about. But it's good to, it's interesting to know that that advertising works for you, and I'd like to talk to you some more about it.
Okay.
I have a card up here, and so let's get in touch and talk about what we can do.
The, on the Chino Valley government website, if you, if you type in UDO, it will give you the entire town's UDO, and you can look up the sign portion. So it's easy to find.
Sir, in the back, did you have something to say?
Emily, Bill Knight. I've been a sign painter since I was 15, that's been how I've handled them. One of the things that I think needs to be considered when doing the figuring out what kind of signs to do, it's always been a premise of any artist, less is more. So if you incorporate, that you can only say, for instance, that the business can only have its name, its address, no other, no other advertising, and it's done in an article form, not so much necessarily in design by the latest technology of computers that have, there are some computer signage companies that do have some article form integrity, but when you're talking about seeing looking signs, it's because they're not designed by anybody that's really got a ton of design in mind. So those are the So those are the only things I think should be taken into consideration, probably anything. Tucson Business Regulations, it was five square feet per frontage foot of business. Industrial signage was one square foot per frontage foot, which made industrial areas signage smaller than actually commercial. That's one thing I can refer to from all of them. Less is more.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mrs. Knight. My name is Sharon Dublin. I'm one of those bandit piano teachers, too. But I would comment just adding, and I realize it just because all of this commentary is preliminary, but I heard, I heard consideration for, particularly with the onsite or offsite thing. But there are, I'm sure, many people in Chino who are not associated with a site. And I didn't hear very much in the preliminary plan about how to accommodate the needs of those business people who are a very real part of Chino. And I would like to just encourage to make sure that all of the stakeholders are well represented in your group.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So I guess at this point, we're seeking volunteers for the stakeholder committee? Is that correct? Is there a limit, how many commissioners can be on that committee without?
How many P&amp;Z commissioners?
Yeah, without constituting a quorum? Three.
Well, let's see. We've barely got a quorum now.
I know.
I'd say three. I think if we have just one would be good. And then we can get, because I'd like to get some significant input from the business community.
Do you have a list of potential stakeholders for the committee?
Not yet. I was hoping we'd be able to get some volunteers here, and then at least one, maybe two, off of P&amp;Z.
Okay.
And then bring a list of names. I need to talk to the mayor and see if he wants to do this as a stakeholders group, or if he wants to form an actual committee.
Okay.
So. If you are interested, let me know. If you know anybody that might be interested, let me know. We need feedback, and if we don't get it, we do what we think you want until somebody tells us no. And we'd rather hear the no upfront than after it's all done. So anybody that you know that might be interested, by all means, ask them to come in and give us a call, and we'll have them on the committee. Yes, ma'am?
I'm the town attorney. I can involve in stakeholder groups in other committees as well. And sometimes it's helpful to have staff members, for example, in this case, maybe somebody from Public Works or Traffic, you know, somebody like that, also on the committee. Just as a suggestion.
Sure.
As well as business, a science person would be great. Somebody from a home occupation where they don't have a site, somebody like that would be good. Somebody from the chamber, of course.
Yeah.
Maybe our co-entrance officer. I expect to have him, actually, follow the process.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd like to.
All right. So we're moving on to the next item, then?
Moving on to the next item.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is proposed text amendments for Section 1.1. Short title, Section 1.4, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Section 1.5, Board of Adjustment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The purpose of this discussion is to review proposed amendments to the referenced sections of the UDO, which set forth the manner and regulation of appointment to, removal from, and standards of ethical conduct of appointees to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. You're up.
The Appointments Committee has asked that Phyllis and I draft some language amending some of the procedures related to appointments to boards and committees. And seeing that we have two, we have the Planning and Zoning and the Board of Adjustments, we have been working on this language to try to refine some of the holes in the way that people are, in the way that members are appointed to these committees. We have more clearly defined their roles and talked more about what ethical standards we're planning to hold them to. The town council will be looking at this on the 13th. They have not yet had a chance to see it. So I provided it here so that we could have a very preliminary discussion. I expect there to be some changes, and then we'll bring it back to the next work-study as well, after the town council's had a crack at it. And then wait for their direction as to when and how they'd like to proceed. So at this point, this is informational, just for review. I can answer some questions, but at this point, it's pretty preliminary. Yes, sir?
I have a question. Under 1.4, Section A, and I might just not be reading this properly, but it removes the wordage where the, a person has to be a citizen of the town of Chino Valley?
Resident.
A resident.
A resident. That's true.
Well, it says qualified elector.
And that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted clarification on. Does a qualified elector mean a resident?
Of the town.
Of the town?
Yes.
It's almost the same.
Okay. That's the question.
It's like, my wife is Canadian. She's a resident, she's a resident of the town. She's not qualified to vote.
Because she's not a citizen?
She's not a US citizen.
Okay. That, I thought that was the case. I just wanted clarification.
What's that?
Then why wasn't resident left in?
Oh, yes. And also convicted felons.
And also convicted felons?
It eliminates convicted felons.
Yeah, because they can't vote.
Okay. So anyone who's not eligible to vote in the town of Chino Valley, not vote carried, but in the town of Chino Valley?
Correct.
Would not qualify as a citizen.
Okay, that actually is a good statement there. I like that.
Question.
One of the interesting things that Phyllis suggested that we add was an alternate member, which I think is a great idea. In case somebody's absent, we have somebody else that can step in. Then we're not, if we have somebody that can't come at the last minute, if something were to happen to one of you in the next couple of weeks, then by having an alternate, we have somebody that can, that attends the meetings, knows what's going on, and can step in and act as a Planning and Zoning Commission member. And it gives them a chance to try it out before they actually sign on to, you know, become a member. They may look at this and go, forget it, I want no part of it. Or, well, you know, this is kind of interesting. But I think it'd be a great, it's a great way to be able to fill a hole. If we have one come up, and it's a good way to be able to test run people that think they want to be on commission. And rather than go through the whole appointment process, just let them try it. We'll appoint them as an alternate, or as, yes, as an alternate. And then when a position opens up, they're ready to go, to be appointed to that, to that open seat.
But the alternate would either sit for an entire meeting, or they would not. They wouldn't come in and out of a meeting if someone declared a conflict?
Right, correct.
Or something of that nature. They either would sit in someone's stead for the entire meeting, or they would not.
Correct. If someone declares a conflict and steps down, well, then that changes the number of commission members. But we can't have an alternate step in and take that place.
We cannot.
We cannot, not for.
That's what I thought I read.
Right. Not for conflict of interest, for illness, for I'm out of town, things like that. We can, but not for a conflict of interest.
And that actually makes a lot of sense, because there could be multiple times that happens if somebody's in business or whatever here. Yeah, because we've had some close calls over the years of not being able to have a meeting at the last minute because somebody got sick or wasn't able to come.
Right.
In 13 years, that's happened more than several times.
With being the number seven, and we have five seated now?
Right.
Whenever a vote is taken, does it require four of the five as it is now?
Yes.
Okay. Not just majority of five?
For a quorum?
No, to vote.
Oh, to vote.
We just have to have a majority of the members present.
Right. A majority of the members present.
Okay. So not, not of the seven that we should have?
Right, correct. A majority of the members present. I see what you're saying. Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
On the second page, 1.4C2B, it's a, it's a new item. It says, "Regular member of the commission is absent at any three consecutive meetings or a total of four meetings with any one year period." And then as you read it, you go further down, and there's no way of being excused from the meeting.
Well, and again, this is where that alternate's going to come in. But.
I guess that raises the question of if I have, and I'm not saying I will, but if I have a legitimate reason why I can't be at the meeting, like I'm taking my wife to the hospital, which I did last month.
Right.
And we didn't have a meeting. But, you know, if I had legitimate reasons why I could not attend the meeting, there's no way of getting excused.
That's, yes, that's correct. That's the way it's written. And again, some, we are taking direction not only from you, but from town council and the Appointments Committee, so.
You want to say something?
I think that part of the reason for that also is, we've taken that, that was an old provision, and most cities don't have that anymore because it's kind of a hangover from school, where you have excused absences if you're sick, or if there's a death in the family or something like that. You have unexcused absences if you're just playing hooky. We're adults, and, you know, if, we assume that if you're not at a meeting, and you're a board member or a council member, you have a legitimate reason for not being here. So what this does is it kind of conforms to the rest of Arizona cities, where if there's three consecutive absences for a board member or a committee member, it puts a strain on the city and on the board, the other board members, and probably there's a reason why you're being absent. And while it's probably not that you're, you don't care, there's not being the effort made to get to the meetings, or you're unable to get there because of illness or because of a family situation, and maybe the city is better filling that position with someone who's more available.
Which that would cover.
That's the justification for it, anyway.
That covers 90 days also, for this three months.
Yes.
Worth of meetings.
And it's three consecutive meetings, or four in a year. And that, that's pretty rare that somebody misses that many meetings.
I have a question on 1.4.4, Quorum Voting. I'm not sure that it reads properly.
1.4, Posits and Duties.
Where it says, "Four members shall constitute a quorum," and then it says, "The affirmative vote, a majority of the members voting shall be required for approval or recommendation to council of any matter before the commission." What exactly is that saying? An affirmative vote, a majority? Is that, should be an affirmative vote, and then that be a section after that?
It should, there should be an "of" in there. The affirmative vote.
All of the majority.
It's not making English.
I think that's exactly what Corey was just asking. That's exactly the same question he was just asking. In order for this board to even convene, we have to have four members present.
Right.
Regardless of how many people are appointed to the board at the time that the board convenes. So like, for instance, right now, we only have five members.
Right.
Four of us have to show up at every meeting, or we cannot begin meeting.
Correct.
The next sentence says that when this board votes, at least a majority of the members that vote, that are present here voting, have to have an affirmative vote for any item to pass.
I understand that.
So they're two different things.
My question is, it doesn't read, it's, I know what they're trying to say, but it doesn't say that.
Okay.
Because there's an "of" missing.
Yeah, there's something, the wording's there isn't squared away. I don't know how to do it, but it doesn't make sense. I know what you're trying to do, but it's not getting the job done.
Yep.
12th grade English doesn't cover that sort of thing.
You caught it.
Well, obviously, it does.
And then there's a typo further in there, but that's.
See, this is a test of your proofreading skills.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Passiak.
When you read, do bids, you learn to proofread really well.
I bet you do. I bet you do.
Mr. Passiak?
Yeah.
Where's the typo?
Pardon me?
Typos.
It's on, the typo is 1.5.6, Item B. Chair and "and" are connected together, should be separated. That's just a real nitpicky.
Oh, 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 yes.
Just because I was getting obcent in at that point.
Sure.
This is why I try not to give you too much to work out. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, this is more of a question. Under 1.4.6, under ethics?
Uh-huh.
Says commissioners are appointed officers of the town.
Commissioners as appointed officers of the town are subject to and shall comply with.
Right, right. Okay. And it says comply with Chapter 35 of the Town Code for Ethics. And when you look at Chapter 35, it talks about public officials.
Right.
So are we officers or officials, or, to the attorney? Is it the same?
It's the same.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to, and I know sometimes you say, okay, that's split in the hair, but if it's the same, fine.
Yep.
And then under the Board of Adjustment, I see that they're going to have one alternate member also. But they do not put a timeframe as they put on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Let's see.
Where it says, in Planning and Zoning, it says the alternate, the term of the alternate commissioner shall be one year. For Board of Adjustment, it just says one alternate.
Where are we? The term of the alternate shall be for one mayor.
We can put that in there.
Oh, I see. Yeah. No, we can certainly add that.
Yeah. I'm just saying it for consistency.
Yes.
I'd have to add that. Now, the rest of the wordage matched up.
Or given the, given the amount of business that goes before the Board of Adjustment, you might consider giving them a longer time period.
Yeah.
As I suspect they're not quite as busy as we are.
Right. I think we've had one hearing in two years.
Yeah.
Anything else?
All righty.
Good feedback. All right. We'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting?
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.